Welcome to the Town of Auburn Planning Board Meeting of Tuesday, January 8th, 2019. Now called to order at 7:00 PM. This meeting is being recorded and broadcasted live by Local Access Program. Is there anyone here in the audience tonight that is recording tonight's meeting? There being none, please rise and join us in a salute to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. At this time, I would like to remind the audience, applicants, town administration, and each of the planning board members to please refrain from asking questions in regards to all matters discussed this evening without first being granted the chairman's consent. The first item on our agenda this evening is reorganization for the planning board.
So, we'll reorganize the board, he'll step down his chair and...
I nominate Wendy as chairman.
I second it.
All those in favor? Aye.
I nominate Ron as vice chair.
All those in favor?
Aye.
It is a vote.
Second.
Alright, so I get the short chair now, huh?
Yep.
We'll slowly sink.
Yeah, these are yours. Alright, so, let's get the minutes out of the way.
Yeah.
So, the minutes of December 11th, 2018. We have someone make a motion to accept the minutes.
Make a motion to accept the minutes? I'll second it.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Do you want to do the retaining bond, or...
Um, sure. Representative was gonna attend, I don't know if you can see her yet or not. Pedro...
Oh, I don't see him.
If you want to wait until...
Sure, sure.
I can bring up the conflict of interest in meeting law if you'd like.
Okay.
A town clerk asked, you know, remind everybody that it's that time of year again to do your meeting law and conflict of interest. If you haven't already responded, you've received the information, please do so. And it's also time for the high annual online ethics test, so I sent everybody an email with that link, you would test and send it to the town clerk, that'd be great.
Okay.
Minutes I can bring up. What else? It's not on the agenda, this came up Thursday. Shannon Reagan and I are applying to CMRPC for DTLTA assistance, district local technical assistance for two potential grants. One is to assist with the master plan and the public outreach. This is a needed step for the master planning committee to, and for the planning board that really need to take to try to help, get some help with some public input. We're also gonna be applying for a zoning bylaw diagnostic in conjunction with childhood. We kind of test subjects to develop the toolkits so all towns can develop diagnostics. So hopefully we'll receive at least one of them. Two would be great, but one would be ideal, so the board will like devote to pursue those. I've got support, letters of support you can sign at the end of the meeting, so I'll leave that up to you if you want to support these two initiatives.
Make a motion to support the two initiatives for DTLTA for CMRPC?
I'll second it.
I can't, I'm not making the motion, I'm saying...
I'll make a motion.
I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Aye. I used to sit in here, Wendy.
Okay. Alright, anything else, Alan?
Well, we can weigh on the rules and regs if they have a little bit of discussion on that one. I scheduled a public hearing on that for the next meeting, so that'll be a formal, formal public hearing.
Perfect. And should we be providing you with our feedback prior to that? Would probably be good?
That'd be great.
Okay. Alright, guys? Okay, 7:05 hearing, Massett Family LLC, request for site plan approval under section 6.7 of the Auburn zoning bylaws for the expansion of a dealership parking lot and vehicle storage on property located at 24, 28, and 30 Faith Avenue. Mr. Glass?
Yes. Good evening, just for the record, my name is Zachary Glass, I'm from Existing Grade. I'm the design engineer for the site. Just to kind of go over a quick summary, the project for anybody in the audience, and the intent was to raise three buildings between 24 and 30 Faith Avenue, and then create a vehicle storage lot for the existing facility, for the Diamond Chevrolet dealership. The proposed parking lot, gonna add a total of 176 storage spaces. I mean, I've gone through this a few times here, I don't know if you'd like me to kind of get to the issues we had last time?
That'd be great.
Okay, for the sake of brevity. The two main issues with the board last time was, I know we had concerns over the pipe crossing for the drain pipe, and what I've done is I've provided a detail with where we're gonna be crossing with our new line underneath the proposed drain line, or the new drain line for that new relocation. What I'm proposing to do is place flowable fill in between those two pipes to hopefully negate any chances of sort of settling, and then after that flowable fill is set, to backfill it the standard way, the rest of the way up to ground surface. And then the other question that came up through the board was about the crosswalk lights and the solar panels on those. I spoke with a representative from Tapco's who were proposing to use their system. What they, they said that these systems are normally designed to run for 10 to 14 days without direct sunlight due to the battery sizes that are placed, and that's on an estimated 300 uses per day, which I would imagine the site is gonna have much less than that. And also a part of using those that they come out and they do a solar analysis of the site to ensure that the panels and the batteries are sized appropriately for their location. So that, that'll be part of the installation of those.
So that's this sheet here?
That's correct. That's the manufacturer for the panel, correct.
Specs are on the back. After 30 days, 24/7 operation without recharge, so maybe it answers that?
Yep. And then, Mr. Coyle had brought up a couple of concerns that I'd like to address now about that those crosswalk signals, they're gonna be push-button actuated, and they'll be controlled so that if you hit one on one side, both lights will flash so that they go both at the same time.
That's it? Did you have a chance to review the bill? Did you have a chance to review the pipe, the way that they're proposing the pipe crosses and the fill?
We did review the detail. We, I don't believe we had enough information relative to the elevation difference between the two, but I believe exactly there's a foot separation.
Just over a foot and a half between those two pipes.
So, that being the case, the full fill would be adequate. So, you know, the other issue or concern that we had was, as you mentioned, we wanted to make sure that the pedestrian signals were push-button actuated and that they were interconnected both sides. We also, also recommend that as a condition placed on the project, that the applicant be responsible for maintenance of that system, so we can, we'll be in town right away, but they would be responsible for maintenance and replacement of it.
Okay.
And the last thing was on the plans, did, it did call out for the four-foot chain link fence with wire mesh as well, and not sure whether or not you'd need wire mesh in addition to it, so we just didn't know.
The typo on mine was just to have the standard chain link mesh, just a two-by-two black vinyl corders we've talked about.
Right. You're gonna eliminate the only rose bush?
That's correct.
Right, so just gonna go with the mesh fence?
Just, just the chain link.
Just the chain link.
Okay. Did you have anything that you, any questions?
None at this time.
Scott? John, anything else?
No, I'm all set.
Ron?
Nope.
Okay. So, motion please. Close the public hearing?
Make a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll second it.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any public comment? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
How would you put the condition that Bill requires?
My apologies, yes, with the condition that Bill required that they maintain the four-foot service crosswalk signs, even though they don't make the flag. Yep, all noted?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
It's not a public hearing, something else, it's a town.
Okay.
Where is that at?
On 171, landscape requirement.
What's the number?
On that slung in, so we should have our formal, uh, green, either way I don't know where's that.
Alright, waiver request, 117 Washington Street, landscape requirement, section 11.2.2, 11.5, and 11.5.3, Juan Gondo?
Good evening, Howard Stepler for the applicant. Mr. Nelson is our site engineer, we've had the opportunity to be here before. I think the first thing is for the waivers, and Mr. Nelson can speak to those applications that apply to the property.
Thank you for the record, my name is Brian Nelson with Metro West Engineering. We've prepared a set of civil drawings and a landscape plan to go with filing for the collision center and building at 117 Washington Street. We resubmitted some plans and documents on December 26th. One of those documents was a letter basically requesting three waivers from the zoning bylaws. First would be section 11 dot 2 dot 2, that the plan be stamped by a registered landscape architect. Plan was prepared by Metro West Engineering, we're civil engineers, surveyors. We do have a botanist on staff who is basically the person who prepared the plan, so we feel like what we've represented is a, a plan that is thorough and comprehensive, and certainly we reviewed the side yard screening and the rear yard screening at our last hearing. So that would be our first waiver that we're requesting.
Okay, if you want to just...
I'm gonna go through them.
And then we'll discuss them.
Okay, certainly. Second waiver is pursuing the section 11 dot 5, which is basically looking to reduce the front buffer zone screening, and basically what we've done is, in the attempt to try to maximize parking in that front where that will have had, pushed it a little bit closer to the streets, and we've got about, on average, a 20-foot landscape buffer from the street line to the edge of curbing. And again, one of the things we looked at was still being able to provide some screening, but also being consistent or exceeding what we've got on abutting properties. So we felt like we're, you know, exceeding certainly what's existing basically on either side of us.
Can I pull that up on the, just so it's all on the side?
And the last waiver deals with section 11 dot 5 dot 3, where we have not proposed any landscape islands within the parking areas. Again, basically the intent is to maximize parking to provide ease of snow plowing and maintenance in the wintertime. And basically, the majority of the property, especially the collision center where the majority of the parking is, those areas will be screened by the perimeter side yard buffer screening.
Mr. Chairman, can you ask him to review at one point before we decide, what we were gonna do on the, on the east side and west side? What were we doing? Because I think we were having a fence and a combination with plantings.
Certainly, I can go over that. Yep, if you like. This is basically a same-size scale and orientation of the landscape plan that was provided with the revised set. And basically what we did was, from this point here, which is about 60 or so feet off of Washington Street, and then running to this point here, basically what that does is it basically provides screening, this would be the fence, which is the dark black line, and then we've got the arbor viti screen on the outside of that, or out toward the property line, basically starting from the same place here, terminating a little bit further towards the rear of the property. We did put some plantings, some red maples and some other shrubs up in this area. In the back, we did put some red oak, basically which are kind of consistent with what we've got out there for existing vegetation and some other shrubs, so we've got five or six red oak. But basically, there is really no, there are no abutting properties or structures for a couple hundred feet at least in the easterly direction. And on the southerly side, we started a little bit further off of Washington Street, basically started the fence here, and ran it all the way back, basically almost along the entire southerly or westerly boundary, however you want to look at this plan, to here. And then again, we've got that arbor viti screen running the whole way. To get up to here, we've got a few larger trees, and then basically, we've got some larger trees in here, and in the front area, and then basically a perennial planting bed in the front.
And you say the front bed is 20 feet wide, the green strip? Or is that light green and the dark green?
That's just the dark green, so it's a little bit narrower here, it's a little bit wider here, so on average, it's about 20 feet.
Does, does that plan depict a fence going across the rear of the property as well?
It does not.
It's a dark line for the...
This is the retaining wall at the back of the parking.
Why is it retaining wall?
Basically, we've got, to level off this site, we've got a bit of a fill in the back. As the existing topo tapers down, we've kind of leveled that area off, so we've got some fill going in this back part right here.
How high is the...
Do you have a guardrail across the back?
We will.
Yeah, how high is the retaining wall?
Retaining wall's about five feet in the back.
He's always got a guardrail there.
Yeah. Basically, we did call out guardrails on this retaining wall, called out a fence on this retaining wall, fence along here, and then guardrail on that section, and then guardrail on this one as well.
So in a basic car could take a leap as a guardrail.
That's correct.
So, the fence on the south side of the, that covers the abutting properties as well, is that why it's further back?
That's correct. Basically, the, there are mobile homes basically on both abutting properties. Correct. So yeah, we basically brought the fence to, you know, past kind of the limits of the existing structures on the abutting properties.
And not for the commercials on each side, because there's commercials in front.
That's correct.
You left it back so you can see it coming down the road, you actually see where it is.
Yeah. Nick?
No.
Scott?
Uh, oh. Out on the landscape requirement, but we're not done yet, are we?
No. This is just for the waivers, for the landscape folders. Anything else to books?
I'm fine with them.
Okay, want to take a motion?
Bill has any comments on it?
No.
All set? Any public comments?
So, this was just on 11.2.2?
And then 11.5, and 11.5.3.
I'll make a motion that we grant the waiver request for 117 Washington Street, 11.2.2, 11.5, and 11.5.3.
A second?
I'll second it.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Alright, 7:15, applicant BNP Properties LLC, request for a site plan approval under section 3.2.7.6, 3.2.5.0, 3.2.5.2, and 9.4 of the Auburn zoning bylaws for motor vehicle repair body shop use and retail store, and sales use or lunchroom restaurant. Request for a special permit under section 3.2.6.11 for multiple business use, and section 3.9.2.2, drive-up facility of the Auburn zoning bylaws, use on property located at 117 Washington Street, Auburn, Mass., map 27, parcel 8. Hello again.
Hello again. So, we've been here several times, and we have been in the peer review process, as everybody knows. Mr. Nelson and the development team have worked with peer review examiner with town officials to revise the plan on multiple, at least several major sort of buckets that the town planning board was looking for. There were, if you might recall, there were some issues relative to lighting. Those issues have been resolved in the new plan. There were some issues of infiltration, those issues have been resolved. There were issues of fencing and planting, we've now seen that those issues have been resolved. And then there were some snow removal, adequacy of snow removal areas, and those, those issues have been resolved. It would appear as though that, with the exception of a few minor calculation issues that the peer, peer review requested some additional calculations on a few matters, and again, not to suggest that they're minor, but they're in process and shouldn't impact the viability of the plan, but those, they can request, and then will be provided. With those exceptions, we think that the matter is ready, and we would hope that the board will be in position to vote on the plan after the questions, and after we supply any information, additional answers at our launch.
So, let's take the peer review.
The peer review, was, second, peer review is completed yesterday, so we got, may I should have any packets, I give today a copy.
So, what about these?
Those, they'll be all addressed.
In there.
The second review. No, it's just kind of, just getting it out, but...
Yeah, so we certainly can take the time to review those now. I'm still seeing things that are outstanding. So, we can take the time to review that now. So that came in? Yeah, yesterday, okay. Alright. Did you speak with Mass DOT about the, even though that the driveway had been widened to 24 feet, there's supposed to be an access permit for Mass DOT? Has that been addressed?
We've had conversations with Mass DOT, I forget the gentleman's name I talked to, I actually have it on, it's on my phone. Sent him, basically, they're looking for 25% plans, we've sent them basically drawings that are done which are much further along, so we're in the process of looking at that, and I'm trying to get a meeting with them face-to-face so we can basically iron out any issues they might have.
Okay. And what about the earth removal permit? Are you gonna be moving that 4,900 cubic yards of fill? Is that gonna be moved to the back of the property? Is that what you propose to do with that?
We'd like to move it off-site. Basically, that, the majority of that is basically just stripping the loam off of the impervious, you know, what would be covered by building and parking lot.
There was a permit required for that.
Okay, so that's one of the things we've been trying to work out, is to, you know, what paperwork we need to, I reached out to Caleb Moody to kind of review the bylaws with him and see what we need to fill out and not...
Okay, alright, so that's in process too?
Yes, chairman.
Yes.
I believe we have a bylaw that, where were you gonna move the dirt to? Some other location in town?
That I think would be, it may wind up moving out of town.
Because I thought we had a restriction on topsoil or loam being removed from the town.
Okay.
So, we'll have to look at that.
I apologize, I plead my ignorance. You say the restriction, the topsoil loam must be kept in town somewhat, essentially?
Right, I mean, for an earth fill permit, there's requirements, and, but there's special requirements, I believe, for removing topsoil from the town. It could be relocated, but it can't, we don't believe it's supposed to be removed from the town.
Okay.
And the snow storage areas that you're saying are gonna be in the retail building parking lot, is that going to change the parking cost during the wintertime? It would, right?
For which section?
For the snow removal, the snow storage areas, that's going to change the parking? Does that negatively affect...
Don't put over the guardrail.
It would be some snow storage here, here, and then out back, and we had talked about basically removing snow from the site as needed.
Okay.
Cause in the back.
You gonna pick it up over that five-foot wall and send it down on the, over the back?
Well, I think basically it could be staged along the back edge and then removed right at the end of the storm as needed.
Okay. Mr. Board?
My comment would be, I did see the peer review comment letter from Ken Hodgson. He did a very thorough job, I thought. It did still have a few outstanding items that I think need to be addressed. I think one of the things would go with the soil testing, which should be witnessed by either the town or consultant. I think that should be done, because obviously groundwater and termination and those things affect the design, so you wouldn't, I don't think you'd wanna do that after you've got a plan, you know, the possibility of something changing. Hopefully it doesn't, I'm sure you wouldn't want to have to redesign it. So I think there were several comments that he still had remaining, so I think those should be addressed by the board. And then a couple of quick comments, so, so you are presenting the Mass DOT, so have they indicated that at all, or not the, would anticipate any turning restrictions, or is that going to be a full-axis driveway?
They have not yet.
Alright, yeah, okay. Alright, and that quantity, is that served by public sewer and public water, or is that private?
I think it's public water, but I do not know about public sewer, that was one of the inquiries we had.
Okay, because you'd obviously, you'd have to abandon that properly.
Yeah.
I didn't see anything shown on the plan.
We've got notes on the erosion control plan, I believe, to cut and cap the utility, existing utilities.
But for the existing septic or cesspool, whatever, you'd have to pump and abandon accordingly.
Okay.
So, that's pretty much all I had. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill.
Madam Chair, could I respond to just a couple of those comments? I did speak with Mr. Hodgson this morning on some of the stormwater issues, and the testing issue, actually he had put in his letter that at the time of construction, he recommended that an additional test pit be done, and that was for the front infiltration system here. What we did talk about was revising its footprint to make it more longer and rectangular basically, so it would slide downhill, and it would alleviate that requirement for the testing. Mr. Hodgson felt comfortable with that.
And I wouldn't necessarily disagree with that, but I think that's something that should be shown on the approved plan. should be shown on the approved plan.
Certainly, we'll, yeah, we already made those adjustments, I didn't bring those plans in tonight. That was, there were some other minor stormwater comments. We looked for some bounding calculations for groundwater separation underneath the infiltration systems and we talked a little bit about the methodology of that. So I think we're on the same page. I think there are a few things that we need to fine-tune and we should be pretty close.
Right, so I think at this point we'll have to continue this. Do we have any comments, John? Okay, go ahead.
Sheet C 300, you have, you show buried propane tanks. Doesn't that require a permit from the town, prior department?
That will require a prior department permit, yes.
And that will be obtained prior construction. And then on the water main section, on sheet C 500, you show a 12-by-12-by-8 tee. You may be able to get away with a 12-by-12-by-8 tap and street valve. Save your own time and money. And then on the, this all has to be approved by the water department, I probably have something to say, but the curb stop coming off the main with a two-inch in each building should have a two-inch self-draining curb stop, not a gate valve.
I'll double-check with the water department. We actually, prior to our last hearing, met with superintendent of the water department. So what we've got laid out here, we've kind of sketched it out. So these were his recommendations, but I can certainly double-check with him and make sure we're all consistent and good.
And then on sheet C 501, in the bottom left-hand corner of the plan, the drainage, you've got a severe reverse curve. You need to go to the left of that line, add a manhole and come in at almost 90 degrees to the other two lines. That's why the question in the peer review was the angles on your manholes.
Okay.
You may not have enough meat left in the manhole when you're running an angle like that, plus the waters fighting each other, but if you just add a manhole, bring it over. Makes it easy. On the oil and gas separator, you show a heavy-duty cast iron covering frame. I didn't see a reference to it being H-20 loading.
Okay, we can certainly add that.
And then on the sewer manhole frame and cover on that page, you still refer to LeBaron. And on the next page, you actually reference in the pre-cast concrete manhole, you reference East Jordan Iron Works. So all the, this is what bothers me, I mean, these are small details to a lot of people, but to me, if somebody misses details like this, what other details are they missing? That's why I really start looking, especially after I made the comment.
LeBaron was bought out by East Jordan Iron Works, so basically the catalog, basically the current East Jordan Iron Works catalog cross-references all the old LeBaron numbers. So.
Correct, you can cross-reference it, but why wouldn't you choose the Eastern Jordan number? That's all I got.
Nick? Scott?
I, comment number one, I mean, not, I mean, this seems like a ZBA matter, but.
Yeah, I'll follow up on the variants. I believe they were approved by variants a multitude ago, if I can double-check.
September, it was after a hearing. It's already been done. Okay, yes, yes.
Clearly Ken wasn't privy.
Yep, and it's been done and recorded at this point. Thank you.
The drive-up facility, just explain what that was exactly.
We had looked at, when we evaluated options for the front building or the retail building, we had evaluated one option for smaller building with a drive-up window. It's obviously not shown on this plan or the plans that were submitted. I'm not sure actually how that became part of the application. Depending, you know, there's no tenant locked in for the front building, so we realize what we're showing now, we may have to come back. If there's a different tenant, if there's a different configuration, that lower pad, we might have to come back and reopen the site plan review for the section of the property. Yeah, because that would reconfigure really that whole lower pad, reduce the building footprint and alter the traffic patterns.
I like the idea of no-traffic islands. They just get destroyed, darn clowning and everything else.
Yeah, you put paint on it, I don't think if you wanted, Alex. That's all.
It was more efficient from a parking standpoint to maximize.
I do have one more question on comment number five. It says that the first year, if you the driveway, partially within the tent for proper zone between the pavement and the property line, is that going to be corrected or is there going to be a variance upon the zoning board?
No, that's already been corrected. I have the curving at the back of the curb over the setback, so I slid that back in. So we're all set there.
Yeah, we're not going to go too far now, because I haven't had a chance to look at them. Anyone else in the audience have anything to say? Motion to continue, do you know, the next meeting is on the 22nd of January?
We would, I don't think we need more time, do we?
No, we should be able to.
We'd like to, obviously, apologize, we haven't been able to get through everything by now, but we'd like to be done as quickly as possible, obviously, so we can get your approval and.
Okay, you anticipate hearing back from Mass DOT within the next two weeks?
I hope I can get a meeting with them.
Okay, and if not, then.
Let's keep it on the list.
Yes.
Yes, yeah.
So motion to continue?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye. Now, while we're still sitting here, can we address one more time the opportunity to possibly begin clearing and what the, what the board's thoughts are on that, feelings on that, and maybe we can address any concerns in terms of erosion control? I think that came up before as an issue, but there is a significant plan to for erosion control or prevent erosion, any runoff. Things that might be of concern, I think that was the main concern, in fact.
Well, I'll take a minute, I want to hear from Bill Coyle.
I think that's something that could consider, but I also think you should approach Mass DOT first for their approvals. I think even clearing the lot technically would require approval from them for vehicles coming in and out.
Okay.
So I'd recommend you talk to Mass, talk to the state highway.
Okay.
Whether or not they would issue a temporary access permit or what it is that they may require, or what may not require, but I think I'd want to make sure that their approvals, if needed, were granted prior to recommending that the town allow you to clear the lot.
So to understand the process, you're saying, speak to Mass DOT, see what is or is not required, then when we come back on the 22nd, you're saying we'll off until the 22nd so that we can address it with the board at that time?
That would be my recommendation.
And you said you have an extensive plan for it?
Yes, and it's, I think, you know, strictly governed, any by regulation and Mr. Fahy, our contractor, can speak more to that if the board wants, but certainly there's a significant erosion control that's both not only required, but any variations from that, any issues that come about, those all things need to be reported to Mass DOT, I believe, so it's stringently enforced, let me put it that way. We are well aware of that.
Well, we can discuss that further on the 22nd when you come back.
I have a question for the, if they do say it's okay to clear, I'm trying to figure out your erosion control barrier. I see the wattle, and I see the stake behind it. Is there a silt fence behind that or just the wattle?
It's a filter mitt, so it's thicker than a wattle, it's basically a 15-inch mulch tube, so it'll be heavier than a wattle, certainly. We've had pretty good luck with those as they just really hold to the ground surface pretty well.
My concern is generally when you do silt fence in hay bales or silt fence in a wattle, the silt fence, the bottom of the silt fence gets buried in the dirt and then now the water runoff goes underneath it. The water, he may go underneath the filter mitt, because you're going to be placing it by the time you clear, it's going to be frozen ground. So if you have a rainstorm in the middle of frozen ground, it's going to run underneath the filter mitt. I'll see how that's going to hold it.
Is it, is it possible for us to run the plan by Mass DOT, come back and address your concern once we've had that conversation? Okay.
And you want to go through with that as well?
Of course, yes. Thank you, thank you.
Sam, please.
Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Will there be any other comments coming? Just trying to get them all.
So the 7:25 hearing, applicant is Quest 28 Milbury LLC, requests a site plan approval under section 9.4.1 of the zoning bylaws for the expansion of a parking area on property located at 28 Milbury Street, Auburn, Mass., map 40, parcel 25.
Hello.
How are you doing?
Good, how are you?
Good. I am Owen Fitzgerald, property manager for the site. So I am back again for just a review and see if there's any questions on the plans that were submitted. I know there was questions that were addressed by Lang and Engineering and submitted before the last meeting. So I don't have updated information, it's the same information that we had from the last meeting.
They all appear to be addressed.
This is the expansion of that parking lot on the west side of the building to add approximately 10,000 square feet for, just to maintain the parking count when there's the elevator added on the north side of the building.
Yeah, looks like everything was, uh, addressed.
I did, since the last meeting as well, I had the letter of no effect for the inland wetlands.
Okay.
Before Concon? Did you?
Yeah.
That was the night after, the night after the last meeting. We went through and just walked through with them and Sandra sent you the letters. Pamela.
Sheila.
Sheila.
So December 12th, okay.
Very good.
Concon approved on December 12th.
That's it.
Thank you. Thank you, Rachel. Any questions?
None.
John? Mr. Brooks? Hearing none?
Comment?
Any public comment? Mr. Council is not here.
Through the chair, the plan was reviewed by Joanne Kaitman in my office and I believe they've addressed all of her comments.
Yeah, appears, okay. And entertain a motion.
To close the, close the hearing.
Motion to close the hearing.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thanks very much.
One more. To approve.
I'll make a motion to approve the plan.
I'll second it.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
All right. It's good that I didn't leave there too many.
Don't worry, we're going to let you go.
Thanks very much for your help.
Thanks.
7:30. Applicant ZPT Energy Solutions requests for a site plan approval. It's under section 9.4.1 of the Auburn zoning bylaws for the installation and operation of a large-scale, ground-mounted, photovoltaic facility on property located at 117 Washington Street. Good evening.
Good evening, how are you?
Please introduce yourselves again.
Sure, my name is Barry Sculte, I'm the principal in ZPT Energy Solutions.
Paul McLean, I'm with ZPT.
Kelly with Meridian Associates.
So what I thought I would do quickly is just to give the board an update of what, how we proceeded with other approvals since we were last before you. So we appeared before the ZBA in November, we did receive our special permit for the project. We also appeared before conservation in December. We received a notice of intent for the project, so those two approvals are in hand. And since we were before you last, I believe it was at the end of November, we've also worked with the peer reviewer, Burton Engineering. They provided their comments, we responded to them, and they provided a response to the board stating that we've addressed all the comments from their review. There were a couple other items from our last meeting that we've provided to you, some of which we did go over on the 12th when we, 12th or 11th when we appeared before you. A quick list is, we provided several details, or details of several projects, similar projects we've completed in nearby towns, similar size, similar capacity. We also prepared a fire complication memo that addressed some of the questions that the board had, namely, the presence or the, how the vegetative cover beneath the panels grows fairly quickly once the installation's completed. We did provide some pictures documenting that. We clarified the fire department access, the grade of the drive, school bus coordination, and we also provided information with respect to why Henshaw Street was not a viable point of access for us. And we'll go into that a little later as well, just expanding on that. We also prepared detailed sightline analysis from actual LiDAR data generated from the site indicating, yeah, there's various visuals from the property. And again, they're not renderings or projections, that's based on actual topography data that's used to generate, frankly, the site plans that we submitted to you. We also received comments from the township engineer that we responded to. We received another letter today from the township engineer that we've reviewed. We feel that information that we'll discuss tonight, combined with information that's been submitted previously, that there are no issues with those comments, we feel that they're, either we'll accept them or provide some additional information. So it's our hope and expectation that, as of tonight, that we've addressed all of your comments and we can close the meeting and move on with our project. So with that, what I'd like to do is turn it over to you from Meridian to go through, focusing predominantly on the most recent letter that we received today from the township engineer.
When we submitted the plans to you a few weeks ago, we didn't discuss them at the last public hearing because it wasn't adequate time for your review, you review them. I can just walk through the major changes that were done. I don't think, you know, tweaks to drainage calculations and numbering type thing is overly crucial. So what we had done is we had, we rerouted some of the drainage going up the original S-curve to make it such that it does not discharge to Lester Street. We added the requested guardrails. We added additional screening between the houses and the proposed work. We have rerouted one of the, two of the detention basin's emergency outlets such that they're not pointing directly at the abutment property. And we've done some other minor grading around the site. That basically sums up the changes that were made from the Burton comment letter. We received the comment letter today from the engineer and your. We received the comment letter today from the engineer and there were a couple of issues that were raised that I think we can just address here.
Which one is that one?
That is. He has basically said that he agrees that we've addressed everything in Burton's letter as his comment number one.
January, David, January 3rd.
He said, item number two, it stated that they recommend a crushstone surface be used to the access drive and we are definitely fine with doing that to reduce any sediment running off the site. That can just be something that can be taken care of as a condition potentially. Number three, the item with Henshaw Street, I can either have you talk about that now or I can skip through and come back to it.
We'll talk about it now. So there were several questions raised with respect to Henshaw Street and if we consider that for access to the site. And number one, there is a title issue with the property and we, at this point, would not be able to get title insurance. But putting that aside, there's some other issues, namely that in order to meet the fire department requirements for the width of the road, the existing dry would have to be widened. There's, we submitted to the board, this is a wetland delineation that was completed by another solar developer that was considering putting a project on this property here. Henshaw Street is right over here. The wetlands that are depicted don't end at Henshaw Street, they continue on the other side so that if we widened this, this road, it would disturb a significant quantity of wetlands. The distance, it's at least 660 linear feet.
Where is that when you go up the?
Here's Henshaw Street, right here.
Yeah. Where were the wetlands?
Right, right, see what's in blue? Those are all wetlands. And they extend to the others, they don't end at Henshaw Street, they extend to the other side as well.
Is it all this?
And the first 150 feet are also in the riverfront.
Riverfront area. So we would have a significant disturbance in the riverfront area, which obviously is not something we want to do and then we would, we would be required to disturb a significant quantity of wetlands. So based on that, we, you know, those are fatal flaw analysis for us and so we did not proceed any further with that, absent of the title issues, which do exist, which obviously would significantly impede our ability to finance the project. But separate from that, there are these site constraints that just make it not feasible for us.
Good. Yeah.
Is that wetlands mostly on Racky's property?
Well, this delineation was on that property, it was focused on that property.
On Racky's?
Right, but the wetlands do extend on the other side of Henshaw, on the, on our side as well. So it's, you'd be disturbing a significant, not only linear but square footage of wetlands to, to expand, widen that roadway and then you have the riverfront, there's about 150 foot of that, that is within the riverfront area.
So did you have any other plans for, when you go up Henshaw Street on the left, you've got some property that's not solar and then on the right, you've got a significant piece. Do you have any other plans for that?
We do not, we're only leasing the property that is, that the solar array is going to cover, so that's, I don't have any knowledge of that.
And is the owner of it present?
He's not present tonight, no.
Because when we've had some other parcels like this and we've developed them, like up further on Rochdale Street, the whole parcel is there. I'm not sure if we had them put in that the rest would not be further developable.
Mm-hmm.
And this.
One on Rochdale, right?
Opposite, yeah.
Yeah.
High Street.
Yeah.
Again, we had a condition that says it's no, not any further developable because of the, especially to keep some free land because of the immense size of the, of what this is going to take up.
Yeah, our, our plans in front of you are specifically geared to the area that we're I don't know if it's appropriate that conditions on land outside of that. I raised the question, I don't know the answer to that.
Because, you know, initially you're putting it on the parcel, on this Henshaw Street parcel, 60 plus acres and can you check with the town council or someone, Adam, to see if we can, if that, if we should be able to get an answer as to what's any further development on this other land that's vacant?
Yeah. I mean, what you could say is that any further development would be subject to obtaining required approvals and quite frankly, with the amount of, with the constraints, I don't think it's feasible. I mean, that may take care of it itself.
Plus, right where you have the, on the picture here, you say on the front cover, right around the area of Henshaw Street or someplace in there, years ago, there was a significant hazardous waste spill there.
Was that on the subject property or was that off?
Yes, it was on this property.
I'm glad we're not leasing that.
Yeah.
My question would be as far as no further development, how do you report to him at all, to the owner of the land?
To the owner, but when they're presenting it, they're presenting the whole site and they're just not, as I see it, not showing anything that's, what is it, approximately 60 acres? 68 acres?
Our lease area is, what's our limit?
Our lease area is?
I don't think it's that much.
16 acres?
60 acres?
16.
16, yeah. Yeah, it's not the whole.
So, but you're showing the whole site as I see it, yeah?
Understood, but our, I believe our plans.
I understand what you're saying.
And our lease area is specific to a certain area.
Right. But what I think we need to look at or at least have an opinion from the town council as to whether or not that can be, that whole parcel comes under this, you are leasing, because on the other one, it's 165 acres and they're only doing maybe 28 or 30 acres a thing and the rest of it's, I think, was said to be not buildable.
Not buildable.
Or it's not subdivisible.
Not subdivisible. Because you couldn't have multiple uses of it.
Right.
Yeah, if the owner were to come with another development, you would have to, yeah, with all the conditions, you know, bylaws including, you know, a split of the parcel so.
There's a well, there's a well, a windmill ran up and down. It's kind of a gas well maybe. Not as I know. I might want that one.
Go soil, do you have anything you want to?
Yes, I did go visit some of the locations they had suggested where they had developed with gravel driveways, side drives and what I did find was the fines, sediment washed out on that and within that side of the roads going into catch basins. So I spoke with David from Meridian and I said I did have a concern with just in gravel on a steep grade such as that, because it was observed that it doesn't wash out. So I did agree that they would look at some sort of other treatment, whether or not it's inch and a half crushstone, three quarter inch crushstone and what the different options were. I haven't seen a cross section of what they're proposing yet. They are indicating that they're willing to use crushstone, again, but I haven't seen detail of what the depth is presented. Also, when I did go out and look at the site distance, in the winter, you can see to the left, but there's clearly brush and trees that have no leaves or foliage currently, so you can see easily. I suspect once the leaves come out, you're not going to see anything left, so that's why we recommended that, that they clear that side of the roadway. And also, there was a tree on both sides that are within the 300 foot site distance that we recommended removal as well. The, apparently the soil testing was not done in the area of the detention ponds or infiltration basins, so it looked as though they're assuming groundwater at grade when they designed it, which is a conservative assumption. So, but then the only other concern that I would have would be if they encountered ledge, if these are designed as infiltration basins, then not going to work with ledge. So granted, it was conservative to assume groundwater is at grade and they raised them high enough to have the two foot groundwater separation, but what we don't know is what's underneath there. So our recommendation was that the soil testing be performed prior to plan approval. We, myself and the other engineer both get concerned with approving plans with soil testing done later, just because it's, it almost forces everyone to kind of look at it and say, okay, let's make this work because these plans are done, approved, and it really should be done at the beginning of the project. So we would recommend that the soil testing be completed prior to plan approval. Also, the grading on the bottom left-hand side of the access drive, so when you first pull it around the left-hand side, looking at the contours, there's a potential that the water could drain right out onto Lester Street, so we thought that we would need to either provide some additional spot grades to make sure that water drains away from Lester Street rather than Lester Street.
Thank you. That it?
Can we respond to those?
Certainly.
With regards to the cross section for the access drive, we can work something out and take care of that, but that's not a big deal. Clearing for the site distance, again, something we're willing to do, that can be potentially placed in as a condition. The grading in the core, we're going to have to get you another cross section, does like a little sketch plan with anticipation, then I can just give out an additional sketch plan showing detailed grading there.
Absolutely, looks like additional grading detail.
And as far as the soil testing, we do have test pits either in the basin exactly or pretty darn close and we did go down about five feet in all holes and we never encountered ledge. So by assuming groundwater at surface, we ducked down five feet, we definitely have the minimum of four feet of natural occurring material if there was ledge deeper down than five feet. It was pretty consistent through the site.
Sure, and I guess the only concern again is that they should be done in the, where the basins are, I don't know how, when you say that darn close, I'm not sure how close that is.
Just look some place in math. Test pits are pretty consistently shown.
And then the, actually, like, another comment that I believe, it's not in the letter, like, we've got a note in there as well that the contractor would determine the location of the temporary sedimentation basins.
Yes.
And we'd like to see that designed by an engineer to determine where those temporary basins are, because in my experience, if you lead up to a contractor, that'd be the very small sedimentation basins where they, they're not engineers, I think it really should be an engineer determining where those temporary basins are going.
Right, the locations, depending on how he physically, the order of how he's physically constructing them, if he's determined, oh, we're going to need one in this spot, then we can size it and create it out for him and then give him that sketch plan to construct.
So maybe the language should be changed that the engineer will determine that. If you, I'm not sure why you can't do it during the design process, if it changes later, that's fine, but I think you should have temporary detention basins shown on the plan of where you anticipate them being, so at least as a starting point for the contractor. And if by chance those locations aren't going to work, you can modify it later.
Just as a point of clarification, we are the contractor. So that's.
You can sell the project and have another contractor.
No, no, it's not. We're, we're, we stay with the project.
That's fine.
Yeah, we, we construct them all. I mean, we could possibly have as a condition that we would have our engineer be present or provide where they're going to be, where they should be located, I have no problem with that.
Even have these, the D E P sizing requirements.
Well, I think we still need to see details of the driveways, the grading on the left-hand side of the driveway, so, you know, there's something. If there's language we can agree to, you know, prior to revising the plan, I think that's fine.
I mean, the temporary ponds themselves are all part of the stormwater permit, right? So you've got, you've got a, you know, stormwater control plan, best practices, daily observations, all that sort of stuff, so it's difficult to put those kind of feature, you know, a temporary construction related feature into a plan, you know, when you've got to react to conditions on site depending on rainfall, kind of intensity, depending on time of year, depending on, you know, many, many factors, so it just.
Again, through the chair, I don't disagree that you may need to change or modify, I think that we should propose what we anticipate them being and then certainly if conditions warrant changes, you know, that can be discussed with our office so we can work with them in the construction.
So sightline clearing, you guys are going to do that, who's maintaining that in the future?
We are, we stay with the project, we do the operation and maintenance, so we're the ones who are responsible for the, for the facility after it's constructed.
Including those sightline?
Whatever, whatever we're required to construct and maintain, we're responsible.
Thank you.
John?
I got a couple of questions. I'm a peer review from Burton Engineering on number 13, page 5. It says that you revised that the subcatch basin area drains toward the hill property calculated as an updated foreland to show there's no increase in runoff rates from the pre-development to the post-development conditions. Now, this subcatch basin, subcatchment basin, does that have a pipe as a effluent?
There is, as it was prior, this subcatchment, this whole side, which truly has one design point, he wanted to break off what was going there. So to capture, so anything coming down the hill here hits a swale and then comes across and then flows naturally over land to there with no increase.
No increase in GPM or no increase in concentration? Because if I take 100 GPM at over 2,000 feet, it's nothing, but if I take 100 GPM, it's better over 5 feet. There's a lot of.
Through the chair, I believe it's no increase in peak runoff, it's not necessarily no increase in runoff.
Correct, there is no increase in volume either.
Oh, yeah.
Design point four, design point one.
Oh, no increase in runoff rate.
And then on page 8 of 11, under 28, calls for two and a half, thirteen and a half feet of crushstone with six inches of loam ced at the basin floor. It's not going to work unless you put filter fabric between the layers because the loam's going to go right down into the stone, first rainstorm. See you later.
So just to clarify, so Burton's request was per mass D E P, stormwater, B M P, hemlock infiltration bottoms should not be lined with loose stone or riprock which would require hand removal and debris, instead, the grates should be lined with six to 12 inches of coarse sand and loam ced, so that was Burton's recommendation. We changed it to comply with his recommendation and that's not acceptable? Or are we, have I missed it?
I think the basic is right, but if you don't put a filter fabric between the loam and the coarse stone, where do you think the loam's going to go? In the basin area, it's going to get settled right out through the stone, it's not going to do a thing.
Yeah, lined with six, six to 12 inches of coarse sand.
That's three quarter inch to inch and a half crushstone.
Or loam.
And then the loam on top, but so once that stone gets compacted in, the loam should be fine.
Through the chair, is the loam sitting directly on top of crushstone?
Correct.
Correct. Yeah, I agree with John, I think it's, would tend to wash out into the stone. You would need something there to keep it from, because it's going to fill the voids in the stone, it's just going to basically disappear on you.
And then just a point of semantics on number 32, sheet 9 of 11, it says temporary sediment basins can be removed, brought to finished grades, that should be, will be removed and brought to finished grade. There we go. That's all I got.
Mr. Burton?
Should we have, Bill?
Should we have, Bill, between Burton and the applicant, and do you decide what we should do with what we just talked about with the crushed stone and the loam?
Well, I think they can look at it, I would suggest that they put a fabric, if it's loam sitting directly on top of crushed stone, it's gonna, it's gonna wash straight through into the stone, so I would just recommend that they come back with it and put a fabric laid on top of the stone, and then place the loam on top of that.
And, uh, can you show me on this layout here with the solaris, you know, when you go up Penn Shore Street all the way, up on the left, there's a pond, can you show me that on here? Or is it...
Which one are you on?
I'm on this, yeah, the same.
So, just come over there?
Is it this little wetland area?
Yeah, right here.
Is that it right there? The pond?
Yeah.
It's not big, it's not a big pond. So, this is it here. And then just quickly, these, what are you doing, protect these, because you're gonna cut all of this, right?
That's all filled.
So, what's happening to these people here, these four or five properties, that it won't wash down onto them?
Well, runoff will go onto their properties, but it's, it's designed such that the pre-development, post-development rates, the post-development rate is not higher than the pre-development, because we're taking a lot of that hill and putting it into those two basins.
Yeah, but pre was all trees and woods.
Yep.
Now, it's gonna be kind of bare, right?
It will be metal, well, the areas outside of the array that aren't being graded are just gonna be stumped, as we talked about prior, but the areas that are being graded will be adequately seeded to stabilize and to...
Are they gonna stump it to that?
Ensure stability of the slope.
Yeah, and the basin itself has been designed to collect the water and not, you know, not increase flow, in fact, there's a slight decrease in part of the calculation, so that's the protection.
Right, the runoff to those three properties is being decreased in volume and in heat flow.
And Burton's spent a lot of time organizing that and making sure that that was the case.
Did you have anything else that you wanted to add? I know you were still, I think that was, did we touch on all of it?
We touched on everything.
Okay. Any comments from the public? No, offset? Okay. So, we want to defer to Mr. Coyle, who requests that the items that he asked will be addressed prior to taking the hold. So, is that the continuing hearing?
Is it possible that any of those matters could just be handled by way of condition, or...
No, especially on something like the test pits, close isn't close enough, because just to give you an example, I wrote with the Upper Blackstone Treatment Plant, they dug test pits in the ledge to relocate the road, every fifty feet, no ledge, no ledge, no ledge, guess who was in between every fifty feet of ledge within a foot of the top of the ground?
I just wanted to be very clear that we have no intention of doing any more test pits, we can have that discussion, and we can show exactly where the pits were with respect to the basins, but as a precondition, we think we've adequately characterized the property, it's consistent, and we have, we feel that the pits are either within or within a couple of feet where the basins are.
Completed by a certified soil specialist.
We can discuss that line with them after the meeting.
Okay. For now, we're gonna continue.
We'll just point frankly, but that's, that's what it is. So, on the twenty-second?
I'll make a motion that we continue this hearing till the twenty-second of January two thousand and nineteen. What time, Adam?
Do them first, seven oh five.
Seven oh five. Is there a second?
I second it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Thank you.
Thank you.
What?
Town council.
Seven thirty-five, applicant Jonathan Poole, request for site plan approval under section three point two, point six one one, five point four of the zoning bylaws. The operation of a new landscape business garage on property located at one twenty-one Celtic Street, Auburn Mass, map twelve, possible one forty-three.
Tell me that was continued, Adam.
There's a peer review on, from thirty feet or not?
They're not here, then. Continue. I'll make a motion that we continue this till January twenty-second, two thousand and nineteen, at seven ten.
For the discussion?
Through the chair, we did meet, this is the land?
Yeah, the landscape business.
You'll just go over it.
Yes, I actually met with them, I guess, I saw them in Joanna, it was a good meeting, so you're going some direction on how to unfold with the drainage and the pavement, so they'll be coming back to us with the plans and plans.
Okay, great. All right, so it's been continued?
Yep.
And...
The decommission?
Oh, okay.
All the members.
All right. So, decommissioning bond for seventy-six Lester Street Solar?
Correct.
Come on.
I submitted an estimate that was reviewed by Jeff Marshall at the EPW.
Good job.
He was okay with it, but we'll have to discuss and decide what to do with it. Yeah, I see that.
Could you introduce yourself, please?
Oh, Pedro Rodriguez from Seabrook Solar.
Stu Longman from Seabrook Solar.
So, I was here with the applicants and owners of the project and the property owners, and we just came here to ask us a question that the board might have on the project with the commissioning bond, and also to discuss some of the changes that the EPC company recommended us to do, we just wanted to discuss them with the board before we take any action.
Okay. Who do you want to first, the decommissioning?
Yeah, whatever you ask.
All right, let's work on that first. John, go ahead, because you're chomping.
Yeah, I mean, I think your price is low, I mean, if you took, just like you're to break up the concrete pads, if you can give me a labor and a machine for two days for ninety-six bucks, for a total of three hundred and ninety-two dollars, I'll be absolutely amazed, because you can't get them there for a grant. So, you get three hundred and ninety-two bucks.
How many buttments do you have to take out?
Two. And they have two days listed as work. And then, uh, to see disturbed areas of ninety-six dollars, the entire field will be disturbed, so there's no way you can receive that for ninety-six bucks, you can't even buy the sea for ninety-six bucks. And then the removal of the cable, does this nineteen thousand three seventy-five, does that include the salvage price to keep that priced out? So, what would the, it'd be nice if you told, showed the total amount, and then showed what you anticipated for salvage cost and reimbursement from salvage.
Yeah, I mean, this is the same formula and numbers that we've used, it has been approved by other towns, I just sent it to the town to get comments, this is now, nothing that, it's final, we just wanna get a number from the board, we're not here to negotiate anything, we just wanna be able to put the decommission bond as soon as possible so we can move forward with the construction, that's our goal.
Well, my personal estimate, you need to have another sixty thousand, a total of two hundred thousand.
Did you want me to spread out that six thousand dollars among all the items, or to add like an extra category?
For, extra category for what?
Well, the six thousand dollars that we will be adding to the total value, did you want me to spread out the six thousand?
Yeah, spread it out, put in some of the seed disturbed, seed in disturbed areas, make that a legitimate number, trucking to the trampor station's gonna cost you more than sixteen hundred bucks, I put some in there, any place where you got a loan number, load it up.
Yeah, that is, fine.
This could be an insurance bond, I assume? That I don't know.
Hi, this isn't new to me, I'd have to find out.
Well, we prefer an insurance bond, rather, I mean, the life of the system is gonna be forty to fifty years. No, it's not. Yeah, well, I promise you, the least... You're gonna tell me, so, I don't mean to, I know it's your business, but show me a solar panel that lasts forty years, that doesn't happen.
Everyone else has said twenty.
Correct. They're guaranteed, the manufacturer guarantees them for twenty-five, and they last longer than that. They guarantee it for twenty-five, so how do you come up with forty? Because they last longer than they get. None of us are old enough to have solar panels up for forty years, you can't legitimize, look at me now, you ain't telling me that. All I'm saying is that... Give me a break. All I'm saying is this bond is going to be there for a long time, we would prefer to do an insurance bond, it shouldn't matter to the town, and if you have a, if you have a document that we can use, we'd like to use it, if not, we suggested one, just wanna know if that's gonna be all right.
Through the chair, perhaps we could reach out to attorney Hennigan, and just for his advisement.
Yes, let's just go.
Absolutely.
Yeah. And how many of these installations have you done?
In total?
And is this the first time that you've had to do one of these decommissioning estimates?
No. No, no, like I say, we do these, it's a pay per mega watt basis, it's the same number, same formula that we had before, we presented to the town, we don't negotiate anything with the town, like, you know, if you guys recommend six thousand dollars or more, and it's spread out in the loan numbers, that's fine, we're not here to negotiate anything.
Okay.
What we wanna know is, you know, the type of bond that we want, that is going to be placed, and the amount.
Okay, well, we're gonna thoroughly investigate that with the town attorney, and we'll get back to you on that, and then I suggest, like John says, to take a good look at the really low...
Yeah, no, no.
And, you know, take another look at those.
Yeah, like, like I said, we, I can add six thousand dollars right away, evenly, and send you a cover by estimate tomorrow morning.
Okay, sounds good. So, you wanted to discuss some changes, or...
Yes. So, this is, as you guys know, well, this is the other question I wanted to ask about the commission bond, we have five separate approvals for five separate lots, the total amount is for the total five megawatt system AC combining the five arrays, how would you like us to proceed with the bond, a total bond for the total project that will be evenly divided among the systems?
Are they all similar in size?
One megawatt AC.
They all by cemetery?
They are all on the cemetery, and the, like we said before, the property will be written by Seabrook Solar holding.
Okay, that'll be another question for our attorney. Okay.
So, this is...
Could I ask that we be, that the attorney be, that we can get from him a complete answer, because we're ready to start.
Absolutely.
So, rather than coming back to the board, he has the authority to say, yes, you can do an insurance bond, here's the form, so, and so on, is that?
You can deal directly with Adam on that, with the attorney.
Okay, true.
All right.
So, this is a combination that we put together in your presentation purposes, trying all the arrays. So, the first thing is, oh, sorry, is this? Is this? Hold on, if you can see. So, we were offered a higher wattage panel, that it is three seventy watts, that allows to keep the five megawatt AC project among the entire arrays and reduce the footprint of the system. As of right now, like I showed in the plan before, we have approvals to build this entire area. By using these panels, we're gonna be able to reduce the site clearing and disturb of the property. So, the four approvals for this section will be built exactly the same way, the only change that we're considering will be in the front lot, the only change that we're requesting there is that we're not gonna put panels.
They're gonna reduce the number of panels?
In the front lot...
In the front lot?
Is not gonna be, there's not gonna be any panels. So, this is the proof, okay. This is the proof plan, what we're proposing is that these panels over here won't be built, because we're gonna be able to maximize, use less amount of panels and keep the same system size. Again, we're in a time constraint, because we're expecting to hear, getting systemic qualification from the SMAR program, shortly, we submitted application, the day that they opened, we're in the final stage, we're hoping within two weeks, we're gonna get a response, shortly after that, we're gonna put the, the application for the building permit, and move forward with the construction. We were hoping that if there's a change, that we will, the town will be kind of touring, we can include that change in the construction set, rather than going through the special permit process, through the planning process, because the only difference that we're not gonna be doing is that we're not gonna install the solar panels. If we have to come back in front of the town, we don't know if we're gonna pursue that route, just because it will slow down the, the term.
So, that's the front part of the property, closest to Lester Street?
Exactly.
Okay.
So, you're saying you had five sections, you're gonna do five, five of these units, now you're only gonna do four?
Four.
But in the, within the four, there'll be increased in wattage?
Exactly, there'll be an increase.
Better panel?
It's a, it's a higher panel, the footprint, the disturb area that was approved, it keeps it exactly the same way, and there'll be five megawatt AC.
How do we proceed with something like that?
Um, because you're making it smaller, it's a, generally, a minimum change is twenty-five percent change in the plan, is what it's...
That's twenty percent.
And this is twenty percent?
Twenty percent. And my, my opinion, because there will be eliminating panels, especially part of the front of the road, it's benefit for the town.
Agreed.
It's not substantial.
Right, and less clearing of land is...
Yeah, does that mean you want to clear that land either, Pedro?
No, 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 the only thing that was...
We need to stir it up.
To continue to get the road through.
To have a road to get through.
Yeah, exactly, the only thing that would make clear is, you know, along the road so we can get up there.
I don't see a problem.
So, twenty percent?
I don't have a problem with that.
No?
But we're gonna have to see something.
We'll have to sign a new plan, though.
We're gonna have to have something on a plan that we can sign, that shows that it will be reduced in size.
I mean, I don't wanna, again, if I wanna make a right, I think one of the conditions on the approval is that the, a planning board has to look and re, re-approve, not really approve, the construction set that will be submitted to the, to the building permit, maybe we can get some sort of letters, say, at that meeting with the construction set, if that's okay, I don't know how you guys would like to proceed.
Bill?
We're gonna look to you on that, Adam.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think we just, we just need a record plan of what, what the change would represent.
Okay.
Correct.
No problem.
Mr. Shannon, did you have something?
Yeah, as far as the conservation that was designed originally, is that all changed now, is that gonna be voided, not gonna do any, along my lot line, is the panels out to be moved, which is nice, but they had, they had conservation plans going on in there with the detention pond, is that being eliminated, or is that being done still?
Yes, yes.
That detention pond is being eliminated as well?
Yeah, the detention pond located in the first, in low one.
The land's not completely...
Yeah, that will not, so this detention pond was located because we were clearing this lot, which drains down to this well, and Changel's Brook is right here, when I talked to the civil engineer, they said, no, they told me, you know, there's no need to do that.
Through the chair, you would have to at least notify conservation the same way, amend, they can amend their approval as well.
Yeah, the same way that we're, you know, that I'm doing right over the plan, we're gonna do the same kind of conservation.
Mr. Shannon?
Do, do the panels now start after the bridge?
Yeah, so... Yeah, so, this is the, the proof plan.
So it should be after the bridge?
It will be after the bridge, correct.
That's a good point. So will you put together the plan as far as what the steps that they need to do and work with them and then come back before us and get the, um, change from Concon as well?
Yeah, correct, yeah, of course. And then the, the other thing, this is not so, um-
There was a zone-
Through the chair before, it made it along to another topic, I think. So, the only other question or concern I would have is for eliminating the detention pond, detention basin, is there water from the other developed area that is designed to go through that basin?
That's something that I, that I spoke to the civil engineer already. I mean, when he looked at this, he told me, we're not going to need it. We're used to-
Who looked at it?
Or civil engineer, yeah, who designed it. But the other thing is that we are going to ask him to redo the drainage calculation just to show that-
Yeah, we want to see revised calculations.
Exactly. Just to double check.
And I'm not sure who did the peer review on this.
Graves.
And there was a zoning variance for this as well, right?
No, special permit.
Special permit, okay.
There's a large wetlands and a stream that runs under the bridge that is between the area that's going to be built and the area that's not going to be built. So there's no way for drainage to actually go into that area.
But that means that we're going to-
Yeah, I think it should just, once we have the revised plan and revised drainage calculations, we, I think we should send them over to Graves just to make sure we get their blessing.
Of course.
Considering they did the original review.
No. The other thing that I wanted to discuss, this is a little crazy idea, was that we have one of the, uh, borders reach out to us. Again, this is the property, this is how we access the property, the bridge is located right here. This, a border, I don't know exactly what he's planning to do with his property, but his broker reached out to us, uh, offering us an easement to access the back of a property, which the only way and the reason why we consider that is so we can, uh, start doing construction while we also work in the bridge. Now, this means that the access to the construction will be changed, um, but that access through Sunrise Avenue will only be for construction purposes and until the bridge is done.
Where are you coming in?
What street is that?
Sunrise or a-
Sunrise. Yeah. That doesn't go down to the Jewish cemetery too, right? That goes right into the cemetery.
Uh, Cemetery Road does.
Cemetery Road does.
Sunrise dead end.
It's almost up at the top.
Private road.
Yeah, I think, this is the, yeah, that's right here because he cleared that line already. When we went to see it, he had cleared this extension, and that's apparently the easement that he's in the process of getting.
Or the subdivision road or something like that, we don't know what he's planning to do.
They have to have signed agreement.
Well, through the chair, I, I, you'd want to be careful because I, what's, we don't want to extend a private road either. It's already, uh, the length is, already exceeds the maximum length of what the town would allow. I'm not sure what the intent of that easement would be, if the intent is to, to build houses and then-
Because we denied something once before because they wanted to extend it further than where it is.
It's a private road, it exceeds the length already that's allowed. Uh, we're there monthly doing grading on that road. Um, they, we are calls constantly, um, so. I would just caution whoever is looking to have an easement, we, you know, what the purpose of the easement is, because I don't see them extending the road. I mean, certainly there's a process they can go through, but they have huge hurdles to, to go through.
That would involve those large logging trucks that you're going to be pulling?
Ex, ex-
Yeah.
Exactly.
And could have construction vehicles over that road would, would be a mess.
I mean, that's the only reason we, you know, I wanted to add before.
Sure. I think that's a non-starter.
Unless you want asphalt to town standards.
For drainage and-
Yeah. Plus, there's, there's home, there's private homes on that road, yeah.
Oh, yeah, this is one dozen houses.
It's, yeah.
Yeah, they, they-
We make a lot of enemies that way, yeah.
Well, I don't, I don't know, when we, that's why we came to the town. We met the owner, we met the other new mission, lives on the other side, and they, he broke us when they reached out to us, I guess he's trying to pass up his role in seller, and I think one of them passes ways to get an easement through his brother because he owns that entire lot. And before I said yes or no, I was like, let me discuss with the town.
Yeah, good idea. Mr. Shannon, did you have something else?
Uh, the panels that aren't going to be put up with that main open space? Section of panels that aren't going to be putting up, would that be open space land, you know, development?
That, yeah, there's no, yeah, there's not going to be any-
Just the road.
It's just the road, what it is right now. We're not going to clear it.
You won't be clearing the land or any of that?
We're not going to clear it and we're not going to be installing anything.
No further subdivision?
No further, uh-
Well, we don't have any plan at this moment to subdivide. I mean, we have no plan to use it, but we weren't also looking to donate it.
You were looking to donate it?
No, we're not.
I think you were, but I, uh-
Oh, sorry. Well, we wanted to talk about the width of the road we discussed with you. You were, I mean, I don't want to put words in your mouth, so refresh my memory.
Well, my memory is that you both, um, came to my office, um, wasn't expecting you, but you dropped in and you discussed the potentially changing, uh, the treatment of your roadway, and, um, I said you'd have to discuss out the planning board. I did have some concerns with what you were recommending. I think there's cop paths out there, um, that you felt as though you would want to either just top dress them, um, and my feeling was any roads that are going to be used, if it was me advising roadways being constructed, if it's a flat grade, if it was gravel, um, you know, what the cross section would be, uh, we'd want to see a plan. If it's steep grade, maybe crushed, don't want to top dress it, but I'd have to go out there and look at it. This, I really haven't been too involved with this particular project. So certainly you can present what you did, you presented to me, to the board, and try to get some input from them as well. I didn't, don't have a full understanding of what change was going to be.
Okay, really, all I really wanted to, um, to do was you would leave the existing road the way it is, that there's the spine road, as I remember what we talked about. You were, you were concerned that that be, uh, you know, left the way it's designed.
Well, I, I can't recall saying that. I haven't, I've never even walked up there, so I can't speak to leaving anything. I can't recommend anything. I, we discussed it, you both came to my office and discussed some changes for half an hour. I can't give you recommendations based on that brief discussion we had.
Okay, well, then, maybe we should, um, you know, table this, but just to put it on the record, what we'd like to do is, this is really the, the main road through the thing. There are some tributaries that are not going to be used by fire trucks. We did discuss this with the fire marshal, and their only, their only purpose really is for, uh, three or four times a year to, to have somebody go down in a Jeep and, and, you know, clean the, the drains, uh, in the, in the drainage basin. So we'd like to be able to make those roads less than the main road. And the way that the approval reads right now is that they're all the same. So we'd like to get, we'd like to get back together with you and talk, you know, walk aside and see if that's okay with you.
So they're going to change the scope then? I mean, you go back through the process?
As you said, that was the approval that we approved when you originally came in. So I think you should have spoke at that time, or someone should have said it, because you agreed to the approval, or that's what we voted on after spending quite a bit of time on, so.
You would open that back up too? You'd have to go through the whole thing again, which I know that's what you're trying to avoid.
Yeah, I mean, clearly.
Okay.
It's hard to ask.
Yeah, for the, for the actual thing that we're here, the, the commission bond, um, will the town council get in touch with us or can we?
He'll talk to Adam.
I'll get in touch and look and see what-
He's going to hear what the council says and then talk to us, and then he can get back to you after that.
And then you'll let us know about the 20% design change and?
20% design change in, in the manner of reduction. It's very important that it's a reduction and not increase.
Okay, I've got to say, we have anything else here?
Yeah, I don't have anything else.
We continue this.
Good luck. All right, rules and regulations for special permits and site plan approval, we already took through the conflict of interest.
So, I'm going to be meeting with Bill and Joe and Caleb-
Next Tuesday.
-next week.
Tuesday.
Tuesday. To hopefully get there in short, we'll say, by Wednesday I'll have what are called final graphs for everybody, and if you have any, any suggestions, anything you want to see that we're not getting, I can know all the posses in there.
I did have a couple notes, now I can't find them.
Um, we've basically doubled the length of the regulation so far, so we're asking for a lot more content, so we have these questions that come up answered ahead of time, hopefully to make things go smoother.
Yeah, no, I thought it was some good stuff, absolutely.
Got a fee schedule in your head also, it's also going to be in the hearing. You have a big, a little by 17 sheets. In fact, there are a ton of towns in the area, and some of the Boston area, uh, we're generally the lowest of all the towns, EY's, so it's a new sheet with-
Out of 351 communities?
Yeah, pretty much.
So these three you want?
Oh, do they, yeah.
Or input on?
You stole them.
Those are mine.
They're mine.
I've been meeting to do it for two meetings now.
I'll tell you, they're mine, I wrote on-
Was that your pile or hers?
That's my pile.
It was my pile.
I wrote, I know, mine disappeared too.
Uh, we're also working on construction, inspection, fees and guidelines, so when these projects are built, we'll most likely be hiring, uh, the period of your to inspect the construction walls taking place, the schedule of when things will take place, if it's every day, if it's all day, once a week. I think we're going to probably have weekly or bi-week of reports so we know what's going on and make sure it's being constructed appropriately, um, and then just make-
Well, that'll be helpful.
It will, I'm just, I can add to that, when we met to discuss that, what we find is contractors in particular, unless you drive by there and check on it every day, they're not calling you. They're, they're supposed to call you at certain times for certain inspections, but some of the contractors, you just keep on going the more you're here from them. So I don't have time to drive to their site every day to see what are you doing today and are not working or they are working. So it's a waste of a lot of our time, and I think by putting it on them and why should, you know, the taxpayers are paying for the engineers to work here, and they really should, the developer really should be paying for those inspections. So I think we're, by having a separate consultant involved that we would select, they would pay for it, uh, but the town would, uh, select a consultant to give inspections.
I think I'm, am I doing some research on a single consultants that all the towns do for a single consultant? Do we want to have, for like a one-year contract, have this one for the grave spur and somebody else? They'll streamline our review times, or speed things up. Right now, I got to go off quotes, get, get a, get three and see who's lowest and make sure that the applicant is good.
And where's that money going to come from, Adam?
Probably from the applicant.
Each one, like we do now, always will be.
Hopefully we'll stream, we'll speed things up a little bit and we'll have consistency in reviews, we'll know what to expect.
And when we get an ASB plan, we'll, we'll have confidence of that, as-bill plan is-
And that's something else, that's, there's going to be a lot of changes, um, the next two months we'll be discussing with stormwater regulations, and ASB plans are going to be required even through, uh, NFT's permit, which is a permit that we've been talking about since probably 2003. It's finally in effect now through EPA, and there's a lot of changes that the town's going to have to do to, uh, meet our requirements for that permit. It may involve some of the requirements with the inspections and ASB plans, so we're trying to pull all this together, and, uh, so stay tuned.
So they're trying to tighten up the stormwater management? Um, I know they've been trying to do that for a long time.
This is, yeah, this has been, we've been working on a permit since, expired in 2003. It's not just us, it's every city in town.
Yeah.
Um, and they just keep continuing it. Well, they finally came out with a new permit that we now have to comply with. We filed, uh, the town filed a notice of intent back in September, um, through DEP and EPA, um, with very specific requirements of what we have to meet over the next, I think, five, 10 years. Gets into a lot of the water bodies and different contaminants to remove them, uh, wet weather, dry weather sampling of every outfall in town, there's, uh, significant requirements.
There was a lot of foot dragging early on because it was kind of, it's an unfunded mandate.
Yes. A lot of appeals, there may be still some appeals in place, but right now we are required to, um, meet the, you know, the permit obligation.
I have a question. I like the idea of us choosing the consultant that does the inspection, but I don't like, is the contractor paying for it directly? Is there a vehicle?
No, they're going to-
No, they're going to pay the town.
Put the one that escrow?
They're going to come to you first.
Same way as reviews.
Then you pay them.
Then we pay them.
Yep.
Okay, that's, that's what I'm watching.
And they're not, they're not allowed to-
Because I'm on a contract right now.
They're not allowed to discuss either without-
I'm supposed to be the middle man.
Adam's the little man, right? So they're not supposed to talk.
Now, we're in the contract, it actually says the contractor shall pay for consulting services for coatings, inspections, this and that, and what?
There's no conflict yet.
No.
Good, that's what I was trying to avoid.
Yeah.
An independent engineer.
It's a mess for a lot.
Right, right.
That you have.
No, I thought these, you know, I thought there was a lot of good stuff in here. But, yeah, give you any feedback.
Yeah.
And after you guys have your meeting, we'll be getting more information?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, all right. All right. Is there anything else?
Yeah, the, the letter of support for the DLT you ordered on earlier.
Okay, we need to sign that?
Ron's got his name's on it, I think it, yesterday, so I'll draw a sign before he runs away. And then these will go out.
Hopefully we won't slide across the package.
We saw, well, I was-
Top two sheets.
Called somebody in, I was told he was here, so.
It was a letter of support for the DLT.
I didn't hear you.
No, that's why I sent the text.
I was getting pretty loud, so maybe you can't hear that.
I was told he was here, we'll find out when he's called.
And it's not yet nine, we've got to catch the meeting. Want to close the meeting or are you?
I make a motion to close the meeting.
Second.
All those in favor? Aye.
I make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.